Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and get us started, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening for the Candidate Forum for Missoula City Council. This event is sponsored by the Missoula's Office of Neighborhoods and the League of Women Voters of Missoula. My name is Natalia Taylor, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Missoula. I would like to begin this forum by reading the League of Women Voters' Land Acknowledgement Statement. The League of Women Voters of Missoula acknowledges that we gather on the traditional lands of the Salish, Kootenai, Kalispel, Ponderay, Blackfeet, and Shoshone tribes. The voting rights of these native peoples were not secured until the 1960s, forty years after the Nineteenth Amendment secured the right to vote for some women. The League is committed to protecting equal access to voting and resisting efforts to disenfranchise. I'd like to thank Kalina Pritchard and Melissa Gluckert of the Missoula's Office of Neighborhoods for coordinating this forum, our League of Women Voters volunteers, and MCAT for broadcasting this program. We have a live audience tonight in the City Council Chamber, and I ask the audience to please hold any applause until the end of the forum to maximize the time the candidates have to answer questions. I'd like to thank our candidates for their willingness to serve Missoula and for participating in tonight's forum. Tonight's forum features three candidates running for a city council seat in Ward Six. Running for an open seat in Ward Six are Chris Foster and Kristen Jordan. Chris is with here tonight. Kristen intended to be here tonight but is unable to attend. We do have an opening statement from Kristen that Mary Laporte, the president of the League of Women Voters of Missoula, will read after the other candidates' opening statements. Kristen answered questions for the League of Women Voters' online election information website, Vote411. You can read her responses and all of the candidates' responses at vote411.org. The candidates running for an unexpired term are Sean Patrick McCoy and Sandra Vasika. Because the last election for Ward Six resulted in a tie, the City Council appointed Sandra Vasika to fill this position through 2025. State law requires that this position be on the ballot at the next general election, with the winner serving the remainder of the term. This forum follows the nonpartisan, unbiased, and impartial format established by the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan, nonprofit, membership organization. We never support candidates or political parties. The purpose of this forum is to give Missoula voters an opportunity to submit written questions to the candidates and hear the candidates' responses. Audience members may write a question on the cards provided here live tonight, and we will collect them. I will give an extra plug, tonight's the only night of the forums that we've had only one ward present, Ward Six. So I would especially encourage live audience members, if you have specific questions about Ward Six, tonight's a great night to ask them. You're more likely to get them asked than other nights when we had multiple wards. So please, we really encourage that. Hold them up, and a volunteer will collect them. And people also have had the opportunity to submit questions to the Missoula Neighborhoods website by noon today. Candidates will be asked as many questions as time permits. There may not be enough time to ask all questions submitted, and the questions will be screened for duplication. All candidates will answer each question. Each candidate will have the same amount of time to respond. Responses will be strictly timed to ensure fairness. Our timers are right over here. The order candidates respond will rotate, so each candidate will have an opportunity to speak first and last. Just before this evening's forum, we drew candidates' numbers from a hat to determine the speaking order, and we will start with opening statements, then have questions, and end with closing statements. We will begin with two-minute opening statements from our candidates, and the order of our speakers will be, from Ward Six, unexpired term first, Sandra Vasika, then, Ward Six, unexpired term, Sean Patrick McCoy, followed by Ward Six, Chris Foster, and then finally, Mary Laporte from the League of Women Voters, for Kristen Jordan. Okay, and we will kick it off, please, with the opening statement from Sandra.
Thank you. Two minutes is very generous. That is a lot more than we've had in the previous forums. And thank you, everyone, for putting this on, and thank you, everyone, for being here. So I'm Sandra Vasika. This is my sixth year on City Council, and I am running to finish out my second term. I am from Missoula. I graduated from Sentinel High School. I did go to Bozeman for college, but I fell in love with a Potomac guy before I left, so I came back, and I live in Missoula now. We have two beautiful children, a nine-month-old and a four-year-old. And the reason why I originally ran for City Council way before I had children, right after I got married, was because we were looking to buy a house, and I was wondering why property taxes were so expensive. And so I went down a deep rabbit hole, and I saw a little bit of, I guess, spending that I did not agree with. And so I said, somebody needs to do something about this. And then turns out, I was not somebody. So I threw my hat in the ring, and I was honorably elected, and I have learned a lot since then. And it takes a while to get your feet underneath you on council, because there's a lot of things behind the scenes that you don't quite understand. And it does take about like one or two years to finally get the grip going. But I've been really proud about my consistency in trying to be fiscally responsible. And I'm really proud that all of my efforts to be fiscally responsible and providing, oh wow, and providing all those amendments to the budget every year has gained the attention of the governor, and I was honored to be on the governor's property tax task force last year. So I would like to continue what I am doing, and I would like your vote to continue what I'm doing, at least for the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. And now for the opening statement from Sean Patrick McCoy.
Great, thank you so much, and thank you to everybody that's here in-house and, I guess, online, maybe joining us live. I also want to thank our organizer, Missoula Neighborhoods and League of Women Voters, in particular, for their decades of work for voting rights. It's an imperative effort that has to be constantly maintained, as we are seeing in today's day and age. Again, my name is Sean Patrick McCoy, and I'm running for the two-year unexpired seat in Ward Six. I am a veteran. I am a former wildland firefighter, graduate from the University of Montana. I was born and raised in Pocatello, Idaho, and spent most of my life in and out of Montana. I currently run a small farm here in Missoula called Frank's Little Farm in the River Road neighborhood, that my family and I have an honor system farm stand that serves our community. I am running for Missoula City Council because I believe that I have leadership skills and just opportunities in my life that have given me the ability to really navigate bureaucracy and bring a lot of leadership to the position. And as much as I like Sandy, and we get along, we're in our second race against each other, and it's not personal by any means, it's just a difference in strategies and approaches. We have very similar ideas on things. But I am running because I want to make a difference. I feel like I've spent my entire life serving my community, and I'd like to continue doing that on City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. And now, over to Ward Six, an opening statement from Chris Foster.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to say, first of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters and to Melissa and Kalina at Neighborhoods for putting this on, giving us this opportunity. My name is Chris Foster. I'm running for Ward Six. I am a retired electrician. I bought my house in the River Road neighborhood eleven years ago. And up until a couple of years ago, I wasn't really paying attention to politics until homeless people started moving into our neighborhood. And my neighbors and friends asked me to look into it, being the retired guy on the block. And so I started by contacting my elected representative, Ward Rep, who was Sandra here, and she was gracious enough to sit down with my wife and I, and we talked, and she encouraged me to get involved. And so I did that. I got involved with the Neighborhood Council. I went to the Mayor's Working Group on Homelessness. I go to the community forum. I attended the Local Government Academy. And along the way, I've done a lot of research. Started with homelessness, and moved into affordability and housing, and then taxes. Also along the way, I've been building relationships and having coffee with people and asking everybody from the mayor to city council members how they felt about these things. So what I've learned in the last two years is that there are answers, and I want to present those answers and bring a solution to these things, because we know what to do now.
Thank you very much, Chris. And now, Mary Laporte will read an opening statement on behalf of Kristen Jordan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristen Jordan. And while I'm so sorry I can't be here in person tonight, I had an important family matter to attend to. I want to thank you and the Neighborhood Council staff for the opportunity to share a bit about who I am and why I'm running for reelection to represent Ward Six on the Missoula City Council. I'm a deeply rooted Missoula resident, a public service, and a neighbor who believes city government should serve the people who live and work here, not just those with the loudest voices or the most resources. In my professional life, I'm a data and policy analyst working in water quality. I have a degree from Evergreen State College in environmental biology and a master's in public administration from University of Montana. Ward Six is home to working families, renters, and homeowners who care deeply about safe streets, affordable housing, and clean, livable neighborhoods. When I talk with residents, I hear about the same challenges again and again. The need for safer crossings and sidewalks, the rising cost of housing, and the frustration of feeling unheard in city decisions. I believe the government should be transparent, accountable, and focused on improving everyday life for all of us, whether that means building missing sidewalks, creating permanently affordable homes, or ensuring that public funds are used for true public benefit. My approach to leadership is rooted in collaboration, fairness, and care for the common good. I believe progress should be measured by how well we take care of one another by protecting renters and homeowners alike, supporting local workers and small businesses, and safeguarding our natural resources for future generations. Even though I can't be with you tonight, please know that I'm listening. I care deeply about this community, and I remain committed to building a Missoula where everyone feels they belong and can thrive. Thank you for your time, for being here, and for continuing to stay engaged in shaping the future of our city.
Thank you, Mary, for reading the opening statement from Kristen Jordan. We will now move on to the questions submitted by the public. The questions will fall into several broad categories. I will do my best to divide up the time so that we get to some questions in each category, as well as to keep them kind of loosely grouped together. Candidates, if you would like for me to repeat a question, please just ask, otherwise I'll just read it the once. And we will kick off with kind of some broader opening questions. First, many candidates share similar values around issues like housing, climate, and community equity. With that in mind, what sets you apart from your opponent? And how do your approaches to achieving your goals differ? And we'll begin with Sean.
Would you repeat that real quick, please?
So, many candidates share similar values around issues like housing, climate, and community equity. With that in mind, what sets you apart from your opponent? And how does your approach to achieving your goals differ?
Oh wow, nice question. So I think, and I'll be curious to hear your response too, Sandy. I think one of the biggest differences between Sandra and I, as far as like housing goes, and you can look at our voting record. I sit as a volunteer of the Chair of the Missoula Consolidated Planning Board, and we both review the exact same subdivisions, reasoning requests, annexations, and so on and so forth. And one of the biggest things that I've noticed between our voting differences is that I tend to evaluate things for safety and will say no against a project that I disagree with in terms with the law. I feel like a lot of times Sandy will approve or disapprove something based on the property owner's rights, and that is one of her focuses. So I think that's one of the clear differences between the way we approach things. I use the governing bodies, you know, that we put together through our housing plans to inform my decision a little differently. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, and Sandra.
Thank you. Yeah, Sean was right. I do usually put the property owner in at the beginning of my decision-making authority. But the second, I guess, the first in front of the property owner is, I ask public safety, and the staff report is always, Fire Department, Police Department, and the Streets Department. And if all of that is okay by them, then I go with the staff recommendation. I'm a big fan of private property rights, but only if it's in the safety of the neighborhood. And if this public safety atmosphere of our local city governance gives the okay, then I'm very okay with that. Another thing that sets me apart is that I come from a family that is divided but loving. And so I'm very familiar with compromising and talking and compromising with other folks. I've been co-sponsors on many referrals through council with folks that I highly disagree with on other levels, but we've gotten together on things that we do agree with. So I'm very good with working together. I'm out of time. Thanks.
Thank you, Sandra, and Chris.
I think the two most important things that set me apart from my opponent are relationships, good working relationships, and the ability to collaborate. Like I said, I've had coffee with dozens of elected people in this town. And if I thought that my opponent was doing a good job, and if they thought my opponent was doing a good job, they wouldn't be endorsing me. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I'm not going to be the type of person to put slogans out there just for votes, and I'm not going to try to pack everything into an ideological box. I'm only going to present things that work, that have been shown to work, that are peer-reviewed, and other cities have done successfully, and that I think that we should try in Missoula.
Thank you, Chris. Our next question. Please discuss what you think the most pressing issue is for Ward Six. And we will begin with Chris.
Well, I think, without question, the most pressing issue for Ward Six, as it is for all of Missoula, is affordability. I hear it time and time again on the doors, in its various forums, whether that's higher rents that are getting out of control, or property taxes for people like me who are on fixed incomes. In the time I've been in my house, I've seen my property taxes just about double. So affordability in its various forms is the first thing. I think the second thing that has been coming up year after year is connectivity, curbs and sidewalks, and the ability to connect with trails.
Thank you, Chris. Sandra?
Thank you. Yeah, I have to agree with Chris over there. Affordability, property taxes are the number-one issue in Missoula, all around Missoula. But specifically toward Six is sidewalks, and my family is so tired of hearing me talk about sidewalks for the past six years. But I'm very proud about something that I just finally accomplished. In, I think, February or March of this year, I was able to convince the City Council to lower the max assessment value for sidewalks from $9,000 that you would have to pay if a sidewalk appeared in front of your home, to $3,500. I tried to get it down to zero, but, you know, compromises. And so if there's a sidewalk, that's, I guess, everybody loves sidewalks. I have two young children, and ADA accessibility, but sidewalks are connectivity, but it's a burden if you have to pay $9,000 out of pocket in 30 days. So I'm very happy with the success that I made.
Thank you, Sandra, and Sean.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is going to be a bit of an echo chamber one. Affordability, you know, like being able to afford your rent. Ward Six is very working-class, and folks are holding down two, three jobs to make rent, or pay their mortgage, or manage their tax bills. So affordability is number one, and right behind it is infrastructure. Ward Six is very spotty as far as infrastructure goes. However, I will give kudos to the city. Curtis Street recently got revamped. I was fortunate enough to go on that walk, where we got to evaluate what the project coming up would be, and I got to make recommendations to the city staff, and that project got moved forward. And it's great to see. It's great to see us making progress, but we have a long way to go in Ward Six, particularly on River Road.
Thank you, Sean. Next question. What professional or personal experiences have best prepared you to serve on the City Council? And we'll begin with Chris.
That's a great question. Well, I think, in my particular case, I was an electrician. I was a project manager. I ran jobs for industrial companies all over the world. So I got experience managing people, budgets, projects, in several different languages through interpreters. In other countries, you have to feed, clothe, and house your workers also. So I got experience negotiating and collaborating that way, and, you know, the give and take. And along the way, I'd learned that folks are folks, and if there's two willing partners, there's a way to get something done. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Over to Sean.
Great, thank you. You know, I feel like this question actually hits on one of the things that sets me out from a lot of our candidates and council members. As a veteran who has spent four years in the Navy, I have navigated one of the largest bureaucracies in the world. And you come out of the military typically with a strong understanding of how to navigate bureaucracy. Channel that into wildland firefighting, another large government bureaucracy, where I got to the elite level as a smoke jumper. I was in college for four years. I earned an English, six years, actually. I earned an English degree major, looking at going to law. I worked in our student newspaper as the editor. And I have been a farmer for the last 15 years. And if you don't learn how to put out fires every day as a farmer, and adapt and overcome constantly, then you won't survive as a farmer. And I feel like all of those skills lend to my position, or my desire for this position.
Thank you, Sean, and Sandra.
Thank you. First of all, I am kind of the black sheep in my family. A lot of my family and friends are more to the left than I am, but we still all love each other. Even, some of them disagree with my fundamental values, love what I'm doing with the city, and actually have donated to my campaign, so that's really surprising to me. So I have that kind of compromise with my family and friends and the differences that we have. When I was in college, I was really bad at public speaking, even though I'd speak a lot. So I joined the Toastmasters Club, and they needed a president, and nobody stepped up to it. So I decided to run, put my hat in the ring for that, and nobody, I ran unopposed. So I became president of Toastmasters, and Toastmasters is an international speaking club. So they count your ums and your ahs. But, that was bad. I was also a student teacher when I was in college, and I was an election judge. I've always wanted to volunteer for my community, and like I mentioned earlier, this is my sixth year on council, so I am familiar about the bureaucracy and the interests that is included in this position.
Thank you, Sandra. Next question is, what key projects or initiatives would you like to accomplish over the next four years, or fewer in the one case, if elected? And we will begin with Sandra.
Can you repeat that?
Yes. What key projects or initiatives would you like to accomplish over the remainder of your term if elected?
I'm very happy you asked that. So, not only trying to get sidewalks down to zero for the property owners, but my wardmate Kristen and I are working on trying to get a lot more River Road infrastructure projects moved up in the CIP project list. Because River Road and Franklin and the Fort neighborhoods feel like we're at the bottom of the barrel, because we are not as fancy as a lot of the other wards are. So we are working together on that. Another thing that I, if I do get elected again, I would really like to make sure that the dog registration isn't a one-year or three-year thing. There is, I can't remember if it's Flathead County or Lake County, but they do a permanent one. So that when you have an older dog, you don't have to decide, hmm, is my dog going to live one year or three years? And it's really traumatizing to one of my constituents who made sure that I made this out of top of my priority list. And I had to go through that myself. So I want to make sure that we can make it, it seems like less paperwork and less postage, although it is a rabies certification thing, but that county up the valley seems to have it figured out. So I'm trying to work with them to figure it out.
Thank you, Sandra. Sean?
So hypothetically speaking, if I were in the seat, I would actually really reach out to Sandy and work on the sidewalk initiative. I have loved what she's done on those regards, and I would carry that as far forward as possible. Other important things to me would be also infrastructure. Ward Six and throughout the city, one of the big things I've learned on the planning board is we usually build first and do infrastructure later. And I don't think I can reverse that trend, but I would sure like to see if we can start making some changes there. Another really important thing to me as a farmer would be protecting and advancing agricultural lands. As we build, I fight regularly to get small farms. I run a half-acre farm in the city, and I would continue to push that as the only agricultural producer on City Council. So those would be some of my big priorities.
Thank you, Sean. Chris?
At our recent Neighborhood Council meetings, infrastructure is the first thing that people mention that they want us to work on. And the second thing they want us to work on is childcare. So those would be my priorities. But longer term, for the city as a whole, I would really love to start a conversation around the solutions that are out there for affordability and our homeless issues in this town. Like I said before, we know what to do. Other cities have experience with this, and they've dealt with it successfully. I'm not gonna, I have to get seven votes, so I know that I can't click my heels together and make it happen. What I'd like to do is something like we did recently with Prost and Code Reform, have civic engagement, have workshops at the library or whatever, and put it in front of people, and let them see what the possibilities are, and let folks make a decision what they want and how they want to pay for it.
Thank you, Chris. We're now going to move on to a series of questions around housing, which all of you highlighted, affordability with housing anyway as a top issue in Ward Six. First, this came from an audience member tonight. What are your thoughts on city-owned land bought with taxpayer dollars being sold to private developers without affordable housing requirements? And we will begin with Sean.
Ooh, that's a tough one. What are my thoughts on that? I think we need to look really carefully at who we're selling our lands to, particularly with the housing issues that we're like being confronted with. I think the Riverfront Triangle looks like it's a pretty good deal. That seems to match. We're getting a lot of funding from that deal for our land trust. But we have a lot more properties, and I think there's a lot we could do more. We need to think outside the box. I don't have any specific examples for this question, but I don't want to just sell to private owners to develop. We just can't have a blanket proposal of that. We need to be thoughtful and use them strategically. There's a lot of things that we could do with them, ideally, besides build housing and, you know... There's a lot of things that we could do with them ideally besides build housing and, you know, other stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Sandra.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, absolutely. What are your thoughts on city owned land bought with taxpayer dollars being sold to private developers without affordable housing requirements?
Thanks, I thought I had that backwards. So currently, a previous council before me, prior 2019, introduced the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And currently, any land that is, I guess, sold to a private entity, 100% of those proceeds go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And so I guess there really is no need to, I guess, there is no need to require any affordable, quote unquote, affordable housing because 100% of the proceeds go to Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Because right now with the Riverfront Triangle, that's $4 million. That's $4 million that is going into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and that is helping affordable housing in Missoula. So I guess those are my thoughts. There is already something that's in place for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Sandra and Chris.
Well, first of all, I'd like to applaud the Mirror for setting up a little task force for bringing forth some ideas about how to deal with that. Personally, I would rather see the city do things like lease the land instead of sell it outright and use that as a source of revenue for the city. I'm all for affordable housing wherever and whenever we can make it happen in the city. But from a city planning perspective, it's kind of dangerous to me to just make a blanket statement that we should do that every single time. I think we should look at each particular parcel, where it's at, and talk about the best use for that parcel. And whenever possible, fold in affordable housing into that parcel, but it may not be called for every time.
Thank you, Chris. Next question on housing. Large amounts of money are being spent by the Missoula Redevelopment Agency on for-profit housing. Do you have any ideas on how the city might support low income and workforce housing? And we will begin with Chris.
Well, I think we should do what's been done in other cities. Right now, the market rate housing is going good and I wouldn't change any of that. I think the city should focus on doing what it can to do what the for-profit market can't do or won't do. I've talked to a couple of developers. They can't stay in business by building truly affordable housing. So they need help. And I think that's a place for the city to step in. I think we should look into forming a fund or increasing the Affordable Housing Trust Fund greatly. Other cities have done this and they build according to need without regard to market conditions, economic conditions or interest rates. Places like Montgomery County, Maryland have been doing this for 30 years. I think we should do the same.
Thank you, Chris and Sandra.
Thank you. I thought that was going to go to an MRA direction, but it did not. With affordable housing and what the city can do about that, I think that with, hopefully with the rezone, the code reform, we will reduce regulations because the regulations are red tape and setbacks and parking requirements, all of those really contribute to the increase in housing. I, my friend group and my husband are all in the construction industry and every single piece of material and labor that is increased with, in regards to building housing is an increase in your rent or an increase in the property in the price. I am a renter. I've been trying to, or looking to buy a house ever since I started, ever since I got married. And why houses are so expensive is because of all the regulatory invasions, I guess. And the more that the city tries to add workforce housing or affordable housing just increases the price for the person that is out of the AMI, the area median income for that area. So it puts some average people at risk on that.
Thank you, Sandra and Sean.
Great, thank you. So I think, as has been previously stated, I think the new code reform is a really good opportunity for us to help ideally incentivize different players to get in the game. And I also think the recent discussions right here on city council about some oversight for the MRA could yield some good results. I don't think there's anything wrong with having that discussion and seeing if we can create a little more oversight to discuss and point that money where it goes. I know there's a lot of discussion within the community about how MRA chooses to use that funding. And I think that's a worthwhile discussion to have. And, you know, ideally this code reform really makes some big changes. I know we're all working hard to get it there.
Thank you, Sean. Next, staying with housing. What do you believe is the government's responsibility toward our most vulnerable citizens, including the unhoused? And we will begin with Chris.
Well, I think it's right there in our city charter. In Article two, we should look after the health and safety of our citizens wherever possible. I believe that our homeless problem, our housing affordability problem and our tax problem are all interrelated. And it's a housing problem. So the city should look into, like I said before, the city should look into finding ways, pathways to build housing for people wherever possible. With regard to the homeless, it's been shown over and over again that stable housing is optimal. It's better than homeless shelters. It has better outcomes for mental health treatment and substance use treatment. And I think that's the direction we should go. And like I said, just do what has worked in other places.
Thank you, Chris. And over to Sean.
Great, thank you. A lot of really good questions this evening. So I believe government's responsibility is to its citizens, life and liberty, health. And to that end, I believe that we need to make every effort to help people, no matter where they may lie in the economic system. Just because you find yourself homeless doesn't mean you're less of a citizen or that your tax dollars that you put in when you were on top don't mean anything. I believe these people have the human dignity to be helped and that we should do everything we can. And does that mean I believe we should give them handouts? No, not necessarily. But helping people get into places that get them to a better place in life is a perfectly good thing for the government to do. They are here at our behest and to serve us. And we need to make sure that what we're doing with our government tax dollars is serving our least economically viable humans. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean and Sandra.
Thank you. I absolutely believe in a social safety net program. We are all Americans, we are all humans, and I absolutely believe that we should help each other out. That being said, I absolutely believe that we, I think that becoming a part of the homeless system does have a correlation with the property taxes that never, never stopped to increase. Because the folks that are on social security today that are trying to buy their groceries, if the property taxes increase $400 a month, that is insane. They can't afford that. So then they're either going to have to move in with family or friends. If they don't have that, then what's going to happen? The city has partnered with the Metal Arc, the YWCA, the Pavarello Center. And I do believe that those are helpful. And one of the things that I am proud of, I did start to spearhead the vehicle permitting program, which does help individuals that have to, that unfortunately have to live in their vehicles or RVs. So now they don't have to live, have to move every 72 hours. Now they can get a permit to live there.
Thank you, Sandra. Next. What balance should the city strike between enforcement, services and housing when responding to homelessness? And we will begin with Sandra.
What was the first one?
It's what balance should the city strike between enforcement, services and housing?
That was a great question. These are really good questions and I like how it's going so fast between us. I believe safety is priority. So with enforcement, as long as nobody's getting injured, nobody's violating another person's rights or another person's personal property, then I guess that should be on the wayside. And the next thing should be like what the mobile hot team does is making sure that that person does have resources available to them. So I do believe that enforcement is first. And then I do think that, I can't remember what the other two were. And I think that the officers or the Black Knight Security do have an obligation to ensure that that person is okay. And then regarding housing, I keep going back and forth on that. I do not believe that housing is a human right. I believe that human rights are things that, like freedom of speech and the ability to not be tortured. But regarding housing, I think that it is up to our nonprofits and our religious people. Sorry, I said stop.
Thank you, Sandra. Sean.
Thank you. Yeah, it's hard, right? You're like going along and you're like, stop. So, you know, it's extremely difficult, right? To find a balance, like where do we find that balance? So for me, it is, you know, it starts with safety for the entire community, right? The people who are struggling as well as the people living around in the neighborhoods. And I think the best thing that we can do is create avenues for folks that find themselves houseless or on the streets to go, whether that's some type of smaller housing, maybe the PAV, whatever we can create. I do not agree with criminalizing them. It just, it exacerbates the situation. I also feel like it's fairly morally wrong to imprison people for being homeless. So it's a tough balance. And there's going to be days when we don't get it right. Our police officers are doing the best they can with every situation and every situation is going to be different. So we've, you know, we've got to take this one step at a time.
Thank you, Sean and Chris.
Could you please repeat that?
Absolutely. What balance should the city strike between enforcement, services and housing when responding to houselessness?
Thank you. Well, it starts with stable housing. Stable housing is not a homeless shelter. The experience with other cities in the entire country of Canada shows that stable housing is far cheaper and far more effective than what we have been doing. We have data, peer reviewed studies to back all that up, lots of years. So that's the first thing. So, and like I said before, it helps with treatment. With that in place, then 12.6 is perfectly fine, right? 12.6 doesn't criminalize homelessness. It prohibits camping in certain places at certain times. But the first thing to do, and the cheapest thing to do, is to provide the housing. Put aside all the moral judgments and all the other emotional judgments and just for the taxpayers' benefit, it's the best solution.
Thank you, Chris. Next, and we're staying with housing. I know it's a, it's a big topic, so we're getting deep into it. How do we balance needs of increased housing and maintaining quality of life in our community? For example, preserving parks and community spaces. So how do we balance those needs of increased housing and maintaining quality of life? And we'll begin with Sean.
Great, thank you. Honestly, I think it's by relying on the plans that we've already created. The downtown master plan, each neighborhood's plan, the new zoning code. We have more plans than you can shake a stick at. And in each and every one of them, they highlight our values, which is community, walkability, transportation, you know, gardens, being able to have your own garden, farmers markets. If you delve into these plans, they very eloquently lay out the visions of this community because community members spend hours working on them. And that to me is the best way to get at solving this issue. We got to build. We definitely really, really have to build and we have to find new ways to build and make it easier. But we have to maintain our character and who we are. And I don't want to see us lose the Garden City because we're so busy building every lot to maximize.
Thank you, Sean and Sandra.
Thank you. Yeah, I have to agree with my opponent here. We have a lot of plans. We have to rely on staff and the experts and they are doing a stand-up job on it. We, there is something I do want to add to what Sean said is that when developers come into a neighborhood and want to build a, maybe an apartment complex, maybe some duplexes or maybe a single family homes, they do have a requirement to have parkland. And if they decide not to do that parkland, then it's called cash in lieu of. And cash in lieu of means that the nearest park in that area gets whatever funding would be available for that park to that park nearby. And one of the most recent cases is in our neighborhood, one of our secret parks that I'm not going to name, is going to get a very, is going to get an upgrade because there is going to be a development in that area. And so I think that there is a good balance regarding it. I think that the staff and the professionals have a really good handle on that. And I, I don't have the expertise behind that to contradict anything that the staff recommends.
Thank you, Sandra and Chris.
Well, it comes down to design. If we want to avoid the mistakes that other cities have made when they grew, we should avoid doing what they did, like especially with regard to sprawl. I'd encourage everybody to read the Governor's Housing Task Force from the summer of 2024. There's a lot of great stuff in there, a lot of great ideas about how to do, how to build cities that are balancing parks and quality of life and that sort of thing. They recommend wherever possible, wherever appropriate, not everywhere certainly, but places like downtown here and along major transportation corridors, six-story mixed-use buildings. That's a great opportunity for green roofs to fold in affordable housing, supported housing and businesses and also childcare. There's a huge opportunity there, I feel.
Thank you, Chris. And last one specifically on housing, although I'm sure it will come up again in both questions and responses. How do you plan to balance development with neighborhood character and environmental sustainability? And we'll begin with Chris.
Well, it's that six-story mixed-use building. We can build clusters of them, neighborhoods of them. Studies have shown that a lot of people, especially younger people, want to live in that kind of urban environment. That can include, like I said, things like affordable housing, down payment assistance, supported housing, buildings, I mean businesses. And we can fold in our values around the climate and sustainability. And, you know, what we want in our communities, where we can have neighborhood gardens on the roofs of these buildings. The technology that's available to us now as far as generating electricity, generating drinking water and treating drinking water, the list goes on and on. And I think we should lean forward into that.
Thank you, Chris and Sandra.
It was a balancing neighborhood character?
Development with neighborhood character and environmental sustainability.
Okay, great. So I'm going to kind of go back to my last answer on that. We have an incredible staff that, one of the things when land use decisions come in front of us as a council, we have the staff recommendation and there are pages and tens of hundreds of pages that we have to read through. And one of the pages is neighborhood character. And it has to, any person that wants to move forward with a change in their rezone or a change in what they want to do with their property that is underlying on city approval, it has to go through those types of, of those, I guess, board recommendations. And the current staff, when it goes through neighborhood character, they have so much criteria that it has to go through, whether it's a walkable, how like how many single family housing is in the area? Is it walkable to bus stops? Is it next to a grocery store? And those are all things that are taken into consideration when the staff puts those presentations in front of us. And I do read all of those. And I, like I said earlier, I do not have the expertise behind me to change what the staff recommends. So that's my concern. So that's my concern.
Thank you, Sandra, and Sean.
Okay, thanks for that. Good question. There's so many tonight. So I think, you know, based on my experience on the Missoula Consolidated Planning Board, a lot of what you need is within the plans that, you know, we just highlighted in the last question. And you can get the character that you want for your neighborhoods out of those plans. And the trick is, is is trying to foster very robust debate within your colleagues so that you can flush out the things that really need to be tackled and protected. And then, as as amazing as the staff is, and Sandra is absolutely right about that, it's also our responsibility to make sure that we're holding those standards up and elevating them. And if we don't feel like staff is meaning them, we push. We can make amendments. We can make conditions of approval for a rezone or subdivision or something so that we can get the character we're looking for.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, we're going to move on. This question, I'd like to thank Climate Smart Missoula for sharing with us this evening. And it is about climate. We know that a strong urban forest is essential to ensuring a healthy and climate resilient community. And we also know that Missoula's urban trees are struggling. What steps would you take to strengthen our local urban forest? And we will begin with Chris.
Well, the very first step is to provide funding for it in the budget and staffing for it. I think an urban forest is is a no-brainer. It it has so many benefits for the city and not just aesthetic. It helps with our, the heat island effect in the city, too. I'd like to see innovative uses and experiments with urban forests and putting trees where we may not normally put them. But I think the first place to start is to carve out a space in the budget for it and the staff to make sure that happens.
Thank you, Chris, and Sean.
Good, thank you. So, you know, this is definitely one of the issues the city is very well aware of. Our Parks Department has a good inventory of our trees. They know how we're, the rate they're being lost. And they're working diligently to try and counterbalance that. I agree wholeheartedly with Chris. I think finding budgeting possibilities to help pad that or fund it more is a very good approach. I also, as an agricultural person, feel like there's a lot of little shortcuts that we might be picking up on as far as how we water our trees, how we provide nutrients for our trees, what type of trees we're selecting. Those are some of the nitty-gritty things that I would start to maybe delve into more and get the details of to see if I could lend some, you know, experience and expertise to help, you know, and not that I might be able to do that. I don't want to get too out of my league with the Parks Department, but I've got a lot of experience and I would love to see what we're doing and if I could help.
Thank you, Sean, and Sandra.
That is a great question. I feel like Eric Melson presented a budget amendment this past year regarding that. And my main concern is keeping people in their homes. Last year was a 17% property tax increase. This year was a 3.4% increase. And as soon as we get our debt paid down, because we have an insane amount of debt in the city and that is being passed on to all the property tax owners. And I do believe in the urban forest. I do believe in our in our Parks Department. In fact, the Parks Department is the third most funded department in the city. And they are, they're great for what's, for what makes us Montana, what makes us Missoula. We are the, we are the green city, you know, the Garden City. So I do highly believe in that. I just believe in people, keeping people in their homes more than that. So as soon as we tackle our debt, as soon as we can get our property taxes under control, then I would love to be able to fund that. We just can't really afford it yet. But people, please water your trees in the summer because we do have the ability to do that.
Thank you, Sandra. And moving on to a couple of questions about infrastructure, I'm going to reword a very specific question here to just sort of ask. When it comes to an exception, a proposal for an exception in a zoning issue, what factors would you consider in making an exception to a rezoning? In this example, it's from residential to industrial.
There's a lot in that. Can you repeat that?
It's, when considering a rezoning exception, what factors as a council member would you consider if you were considering a proposal to rezone? Is that enough? Okay. And we are beginning with you, Sandra.
Thanks. I got my handy D and H sheet right here, so thank you. When looking at an exempt, an exception to rezoning, I guess, that that question's kind of contradicts itself because there, there, like, there's conditional rezoning, but you can't really like make an, make an exception to it. So like you, if you want to do a rezone for your, for your property, there are certain criteria you have to meet. And then under the current zoning laws, there's conditional rezoning. But I think we're doing away with that in the, in the zoning rebuff. So I guess what exceptions I'm looking for, is it legal, number one? Is it under our purview, number two? Public safety and accessibility, number three. Can fire and police get there? Yeah, I guess, I guess those are my top three priorities. Thanks.
Thank you, Sandra, and Sean.
Yeah, I think Sandy was hitting the nail on the head there. This is maybe just a little off from, so when you file for rezoning of something, there are a set amount of conditions that need to be met before it can even be considered. And, you know, if it were something extreme or broad, you know, environmentally speaking, it would probably get shut down before it even reached that stage. I'm trying to think of an example of something. But, you know, again, you know, my criteria relies on safety, compatibility with character of the neighborhood, ingress and egress for fires, similar things to Sandy said. You know, and I can't, I wish I could think of an example, but I can't think of one off the top of my head. So it's it's not that easy to do a rezone, particularly from urban to industrial. Like, that's a big leap.
Thank you, Sean, and Chris.
Yeah, I agree with most of what's been said so far. I, I'm not real sure how this would fit in with our new code reform. I know that there's going to be cases where things are going to be allowed as of right. But as far as a rezone, in addition to the conditions that have been discussed already, I would be looking at what's best for the neighborhood, what those neighbors think about that rezone and whether it's best for the city as a whole. But it's it's hard to, without the details, it's hard for me to make generalizations.
Thank you, Chris. And my apologies, guys. I tried to make that a little bit more broad and I think I just made it confusing. So I'll own that, not the questioner. Sorry about that. Next, we have a question about pedestrian safety, which has come up before. So I know we've talked about sidewalks. So the question here says, crossing some streets has become so dangerous that residents have been forced to use flags at crosswalks to cross safely. How will you work with neighbors on both immediate fixes, like flashing speed signs and long-term solutions to improve pedestrian safety? And we will begin with Sean.
So I think, you know, in identifying areas where we need more safety is one of the big challenges. One of the things in our ward that we've done recently is put in some of the flashing pedestrian lights, thereby GRIST. And those are small enough projects that we can actually get them done through like the Missoula Neighborhood Program or Neighborhoods. And they don't necessarily come out of the discretionary funding that is, you know, the heart of the Missoula budget. Long term, I would love to see us revamp our pedestrian education system around travel. We see people bicycling the wrong direction all the time. I think we need new pedestrian, like classes and workshops, bicycle classes and workshops. Driver training needs to be updated to include pedestrian safety. I think ultimately, long term, we need to really beef up our education.
Thank you, Sean, and Sandra.
Thanks. I have to agree with Sean about the the flashing pedestrian crossings. There's a technical term for them and I can never remember what they're called. But whenever I get a complaint about, it's mainly crossing Third Street from the River Road neighborhood over to Franklin and the Fort neighborhood because usually like the only crosswalk is on Russell and Reserve. And now there's one pedestrian crossing area at Catlin and there's one across from GRIST. And that really shortens the the amount where you have to walk to safely cross. Every time that a constituent asks me about pedestrian safety, I email the Streets Department and they are so quick and getting back to me. And I I probably email them like four times a week about my neighborhood, Franklin and Fort neighborhood. And I'm just so happy with the Streets Department because they take my concerns very seriously. And then when Sean was mentioning it earlier, the pedestrian safe walkway on Curtis Street is amazing for two reasons. Number one, if you have small children or people walking to their kids walking to the bus stop, they're safe. Number two, it's not a sidewalk, so the property owner in front of it doesn't have to pay or for it if it gets injured or shoveling it.
Thank you, Sandra, and Chris.
Yep. The River Road Neighborhood Council was pleased to write a letter in support of that new crossing at Third Street and Grant with the Council Grove Apartments. And we contributed $6,000 of our community grants funds towards that project. I think it was about $20,000 total. The, the, the problem with the Franklin and the Fort and the River Road neighborhoods is they used to be rural county. And so they're kind of playing catch-up as far as infrastructure, curb sidewalks, that sort of thing, that they were never really designed for that. I think as a general principle, pedestrians and bicyclists and cars don't mix. So, and wherever possible, I'd like to see them separated. And that means more bikeways and walkways like on Curtis and also more expanding the trail network so people don't have to use streets to get from one place to the next.
Thank you, Chris. Next, all we hear about during elections sometimes, it feels like, property taxes and housing. These are important. We've talked about them quite a lot this evening. But the questioner asked, what would you like to do to make our everyday lives better as Missoulians? That's not one of those two. And we will begin with Chris.
So not housing and not taxes. Well, that's been the number one thing on people's minds at the doors, that's for sure. But I I think my interest is in improving quality of life, everyday life. And given my background in construction, I think building a city where life is just as better, is less stressful. We just got through talking about cars and pedestrians interacting. And I'd like to focus on designing a city where that's more broadly the case with trees overhead, you know, where people with young kids and strollers or, you know, with dogs can feel like they're safe, just in a walkable, bikeable town.
Thank you, Chris, and Sandra.
Thank you very much for this question. Building permits, they are a huge pain. If somebody wants to build a fence or shed or porch, you have to get the city's permission to do so. And I'm a huge believer in private property rights. And I believe as long as it's not interfering with the safety of your neighbor, then why should you be able to paint or build your own shed on your own property? That is number one. And number two is, one thing that, that, another thing that I'm really proud of that I recently have accomplished on council is we, the council itself has moved public comment to the end of the city council meetings two years ago. And I am unhappy with that and a lot of public are unhappy with that. So right now, it did pass committee unanimously, which I'm really proud of, is to add a 20-minute public comment period at the beginning so that the public can air their grievances in front of council without having to wait until 4:00 AM to do so. So I think that if the, if the public has easily accessibility to us as council members, then I think it would benefit the public very much.
Thank you, Sandra, and Sean.
So I think I'm going to lean into my bread and butter of agriculture a little bit. I think one of the things I would love to do is make it a lot easier for folks to have a garden and flower beds. We talked about fencing, right? That's one of the things I've been pushing for for a while from the planning board is, why can't we just build a fence to keep deer out? Why do we have bureaucracy managing this? It's ridiculous. I would love to work on that front as far as homeowners go and just as far as permitting. And then I'll throw out one of my big ideas that can really encompass the entire city is I have had an idea for years to consolidate the farmers' markets to the center of town on Pine Street so that we free up parking on the outside and everybody's traveling to the center and that we can create a really nice atmosphere and move our food vendors down to one end and our farmers down to another. And we would also support our agricultural community in a much broader way as well as downtown businesses. So that's my big, big idea for you.
Thank you, Sean. And moving on to a theme you just mentioned, Sandra. A very welcome proposal, this is moving on to a theme of government largely, but it's something that you just happened to have mentioned. A very welcome proposal has been made to restore public comment to the beginning of city council meetings, but only for 20 minutes. Do you believe that this short window is truly sufficient to allow meaningful public participation on most important issues affecting our community? And we will begin with Chris.
I, I, public comment is important. There's been other cities where groups have used public comment periods to disrupt the meeting and delay the official actions. And that's not appropriate. I think there's all kinds of things we can do around that. We can have people videotape their comments, audiotape their comments so they don't actually have to be physically present at the time of the meeting. And there's other ways to do it. I welcome all good faith comment because I'm a firm believer in the idea that you never know where the next good idea is going to come from. So I think we need to hear from people. I'm also a big believer in the fact that politics is what happens before the meetings. So I encourage people to get together, join their neighborhood council and bring a fully formed idea to the meetings.
Thank you, Chris, and Sean.
So I would like to applaud Sandy and Representative Carlino and Kristen Jordan and Bob Campbell for their efforts to do this. I think it shows a fantastic collaboration and compromise to bring some public comment back to the beginning when it's easier for residents to be there and to make public comment. I know that there's a disruptive element that can creep in. However, I personally believe very strongly that we are here to serve the people. We are here to listen to their complaints and they should not have to wait until 1:00 in the morning to do that. So I think this is a great compromise and I think we can do what we've done. We can see how it unfolds over the next year and maybe we can add some time to it. Maybe we have to take something away, maybe we add a component. But this is what government's supposed to be. It's supposed to be flexible, flexible and responsive, right? Respond to what your constituents are saying. Don't just say no. That's not how it works.
Thank you, Sean, and Sandra.
Very happy about this question. No, I do not think it's enough. If it was up to me, I would have an hour at the beginning because I want to make something clear that this is not changing. It's not moving the public comment period from the end to the beginning for only 20 minutes. It's adding an additional 20 minutes at the beginning. We're still going to have the never-ending time at the end. I wanted to do a lot longer than that when I first proposed. I wanted to do a lot longer than that when I first proposed this. I just, to change the council rules, I need two-thirds of council members to get on my side, and I need seven votes. And after talking with my colleagues behind the scenes, I did not have seven votes if I had it at an hour. And so, after talking with colleagues behind the scenes, I finally landed on I can get the votes with 20 minutes. And that's what I guess bureaucracy is, is working with your colleagues and trying to get what you can get. And I do highly, I love that the public does come to the council and says all their grievances. And I think that we should allow more time because by the, by the time that somebody is so frustrated as a citizen to actually come down to a city council meeting and air their grievances, we need to take them seriously. We need to give them time.
Thank you, Sandra. And next, staying with the topic of government. A 2024 community survey revealed as few as three in 10 residents expressed overall confidence in Missoula government. Why do you think confidence in Missoula government is so low? And what would you do to restore trust and confidence in local government? And we will begin with Sandra.
Consistency in the past six years of me being on council has been very rare. There's been a lot of turnover. When I first got elected, the late Mayor Angin was on, was our mayor, and he was our mayor for 20 years. And he passed away, and then we appointed a new mayor. And then when the municipal election came up, there was a new mayor. And when the previous appointee mayor got elected, we had to appoint somebody to Ward 2. And it's just been a lot of appointments. There's been a lot of turnover, and there hasn't been very much consistency going on. And during that, there's been a lot of blame shifting. I have always been very consistent in that why your property taxes are so high is because it is the city council's fault. It is our fault. The legislator, legislative session gives us parameters on how we can do our budget, and we need to adhere between those, those parameters. And I think that there has been distrust in the government because there's been a lot of blame shifting. But I'm saying blame me, blame the city council, and maybe we can keep some consistency these days.
Thank you, Sandra, and Sean.
So, as I talk to people and as I go on forums and read and Twitter and, you know, whatever they are, not really my shtick is social media, but I get in there and I read it, and sometimes I comment. And one of the biggest things I see is just an outright anger over government that goes from top to bottom and a lot, a lot of misunderstanding. People just don't really understand how our government works, how our bureaucracy moves, how our tax system actually works. I will take just a little bit of disagreement with Sandy, and it's not all the city's responsibility and my fault. There's a shared responsibility between the three governing bodies of the state, the state, the county, and the city. We all tax you at different rates, and we all bear a responsibility for that. But we don't educate people on how that's actually working. So, I think the way we tackle that problem is we have to get out there and educate people. How does it actually work?
Thank you, Sean, and Chris.
Well, we've had a steady drumbeat of attacks on government over the last several decades that hasn't been helpful. But I would like to remind people that democracy is built on trust. We trust each other to make good decisions on our behalf. People serve on commissions and committees and on city council, and that's based on trust. Also, democracy is us. So, what we're really saying when we don't trust the government, we don't trust each other. And I think one of the antidotes to that is to start rubbing shoulders with each other, get off our screens, and start participating in your own democracy. Show up for your neighborhood council meetings. Show up for city council meetings. Volunteer to serve on the board. Get to know your neighbors. Get to know your fellow citizens that had, that share your interests.
Thank you, Chris. Next, civic engagement is what makes democracy tick. What are you doing personally to, excuse me, to engage and educate the public on the inner workings of civic life? And we will begin with Sean.
So, I think the thing that I have done for many, many years is just talking with people. I talk with people all the time, whether it's at my farm stand, not so much through social media, but through lots of different avenues. And, you know, like, getting to know people personally, interacting with them, and representing the things that you believe in. Like, I believe in this country, and I believe that we all are in this together. And you have to share those beliefs. You have to represent the things that you want to see. And so, for me, it's really just in engaging. And at a public service level, I think you've got to raise that engagement up and be at as many meetings as you can, whether you agree or disagree with the group. You need to be there because you're their representative, and you need to figure out ways to speak for them and to connect with them. We can all connect on a basic level.
Thank you, Sean, and Sandra.
I also like this, I love this atmosphere with just us three. We can actually get answers or questions answered. So, every year, I think, started my second year on council, a Hellgate class reached out to me, Hellgate teacher reached out to me and asking if I would be happy to speak to their class. It's a group of freshmen, and every year, for the past five years, I've been speaking out, speaking to them, giving them constitutions about what's going on in local government. So, that's one way that I'm engaging the youth. I also call into radio stations almost weekly, mostly like three times weekly, just to let them know what's going on in city council, what's going on that week, what's going on in the next month, just so that people are aware. I do have a very active social media where I let folks know what's going on in their local government because a lot of folks just want to live their daily lives. They want to go to work, raise their kids, come home to dinner. And, but to have a healthy engagement and to truly be a part of your community and a part of your country, you, you have to pay attention to what's going on. And so, my goal is to let folks know what's going on, and they can engage if they want, and I would really like them to.
Thank you, Sandra, and Chris.
I think it just comes down to communicating. For example, if you have a question about some particular aspect of the city, you can always email or call up that particular person and ask to meet with them. And they're gonna say yes. So, when the MRA discussion came up with the Stockman Bank situation, I emailed Ellen Buchanan at MRA and asked her if we could meet. She said, sure. We ended up meeting twice. We had very long conversations both times. And I got the MRA side of the Stockman Bank question, which is completely different than what you've been hearing. Another thing that we've been doing is, in our neighborhood, we've been having ice cream socia's, and people just show up. And instead of having a formal meeting, we just rub shoulders and talk. And it's been wonderful and eye-opening.
Thank you, Chris. And this brings us to our final question submitted by the public this evening. How will you ensure respectful and productive decision-making when you disagree with others on the council? And we will begin with Chris.
That's a great question, it's a very important question because as I've been having coffee with people over the last year, just considering whether I was gonna run, and then after I was decided to run, it became clear that occasionally you're gonna disagree. And I think it comes down to communication and commitment to that communication and not getting stuck in, in your point of view or in your ideological box. This is city government. It's nonpartisan for a reason. We gotta get stuff done. We gotta get the streets plowed. We gotta keep the water running, that sort of thing. So, it's, it's more of a commitment in my mind than anything else to keep communication lines open with people even as I disagree with them. And I'm committed to do that in my time on council.
Thank you, Chris, and over to Sandra.
Thank you. During my six years on council, I have disagreed with everybody on council. I've also agreed with everybody on council. I, I, my best friend from college, she is more left-leaning than I am. And she has on her phone screen, view things from a different perspective. And I keep that in mind every day, especially when I'm making policy decisions because if I disagree with somebody, I'm wondering why? What am I not seeing? And so, I ask people, why, why do you think that way? What am I not seeing on this? How can I think differently? And I've had my mind changed. I've had my mind changed on the council floor before. I just, I think that the more information, the better, and seeing where somebody's coming from really helps in that decision-making process. And respect really goes a long way because if you disagree with somebody, that's fine. You just can't be rude about it. Because everybody comes from different, different walks of life. Everybody has differing opinions. That's what makes us human. And so, to agree on everything makes us robots, and I highly disagree with that. So, I think just be human, be respectful colleagues.
Thank you, Sandra, and Sean.
So, you know, my primary answer to this is, is kind of the same that I have for anything that comes to leadership and lead by example. Bring forward the type of respect, the empathy and commitment that you have for your colleagues and for your community. I have been in heated discussions with neo-Nazis that were just that. They were heated, and we disagreed. But I was able to connect with that person on a human level, and we didn't resort to violence, and we didn't yell and name-call and all these different things. So, in a professional setting like this, I think the most important thing you can do is bring the values that you want to the table and represent them and be very committed to holding them, and don't hold grudges. There's nothing personal happening here. You're not after each other. You're not on a different side. You're all working for the same thing. So, keeping in mind that you're all on the same team, and then bring what you want to the table.
Thank you, Sean. We will now move on to our closing statements. We will have two-minute closing statements from each candidate, and the order of speakers will be Chris, and then Sandra, and then Sean. So, Chris, we'll begin with you, your closing statement.
Well, thanks again for this opportunity. This is an important part of our democracy. We talked a couple of times tonight about trust, about communication. And one of the things that I've learned during this time is how our community and our democracy runs on trust. So, I'm trying to, I'm hoping that you'll see in me that guy that even though you can't keep up with all the different issues in town, be an expert on them, I'm hoping that you'll look at me and see that guy that you can trust to do the hard work to not only understand the issues, but work with the other counselors on the issues and to collaborate in order to build, you know, to come to a good decision as far as policy goes on that. So, I think that's the, the key to good policymaking. There's gonna be, there's 12 of us on city council. You gotta get to seven votes. So, the key to getting to seven votes is communication and collaboration and trust. And like Sean said, not holding grudges. So, that's gonna be my focus. We have things that we need to do in the city, the urgent things that need to be addressed around affordability and housing. And these are heavy lifts. It's gonna take substantial unity to get this done, not only as far as deciding what to do, but more importantly and more difficultly, how to pay for that stuff. So, that's the sort of thing that I want to work on, on city council, and I hope you'll vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris Foster, and Sandra, your closing statement.
Yeah, thank you again for having us. I think this is our last forum of the election season, and I really like these, these forums. I, I really would like to keep my position because when I ran two years ago, I was running for four years. And I'm not done yet. I, if a third term's in me, I don't know yet. But I do know that I do have two more years, and I have a lot of things that I haven't accomplished yet. I am very proud of my, my, I guess, what I've done so far. I think I'm the only one on council who has been able to co-sponsor things with, co-sponsor referrals with everybody from the political spectrum. I have co-sponsored with my wardmate, who we are very, very ideologically different, and yet we co-sponsor things together all the time because we understand what, what is needed for our neighborhood and what is needed for our community. And I think that respect and, and what Chris said and what Sean said, don't hold grudges, comes a very, very long way because this is our community that we are talking about. This isn't just a decision in, in the wind. This is, every decision makes an impact on somebody in our community in a very drastic way. And we need to take that very seriously. And we can't have personal grudges or personal attacks come in the way between that. And I feel like I have been able to handle that responsibility very respectfully. And all I'm asking for is to finish off my two years. And I, I, I'm really proud of what I've done, and I don't need to take up any more time. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you, Sandra Vasika. And finally, closing statement from Sean.
Thank you. So, I think I'll just start by thanking everybody, the volunteers, our timekeepers and moderators for being here and the public that's joining us in your valuable time. So, man, we have covered so many topics. I don't think there's anything I want to cover again. I just want to, you know, if folks want to get more information about me, you can go to my website. Everything's under my big full name, Sean Patrick McCoy Forward 6 website, whatever. If you want to call me, reach out. I actually have a cell phone now. And I'm happy to meet with anybody to talk more. If you have anything, please don't hesitate to reach out. And I think I also just want to take a moment to try and encourage everybody to take a step into the wild side and get to know your neighbors. Break away from the, you know, the dialogue out there that we are a divided nation. We are only divided in the newsrooms that are streaming into our houses every day. That's the only place. If you walk out your front door every day, your neighbors of all different stripes are going to work, raising their kids, and getting along just fine with you. And they may not agree with you politically. So, I just want to encourage people that as we weigh into our politics, work hard to get to know your neighbors. Work hard to be good civic, active citizens. We are desperately needed right now. Every American has to get involved and make their voice heard. And I want to encourage people to try to do that to the best of your ability. I know how hard it is because we all work. Some of us work multiple jobs. But please, get out there, make your voice heard, and get your votes in. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean Patrick McCoy. And thank you, all of the candidates, for your thoughtful responses this evening, and most of all, for your willingness to serve the Missoula public on our city council. November 4th is Election Day. This will be an all-mail-in election. Ballots will be mailed to voters 20 days prior to the election. Ballots may be returned in the mail or in person to the Missoula County Elections Office. Ballots must be received at the Missoula County Elections Office by Election Day, November 4th, 2025, at 8:00 PM. You must be registered to vote and be listed as an active voter on the registration rolls to receive a ballot. Check your registration information at the My Voter page on the Montana Secretary of State's election website. If you are not registered to vote, contact the Missoula County Elections Office at 406-258-4751 for instructions. On behalf of the Missoula League of Women Voters, thank you for joining us this evening. Remember, your vote counts.